Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council. It is Monday, September 28th, 2020. It is... Actually, not yet. We are reconvening for open session. In reportable actions to report, the city council is reporting out of closed session that it authorized the city attorney to file suit against fifteen different properties for failure to comply with the city's vacant lot regulations. The council votes were unanimous for all fifteen properties. For two properties, council member Coops, actually Mayor Protem Coops and council member Dutton were not counted as part of the quorum and recuse themselves from the discussion and vote because of a conflict related to their respective property interests. As the council member, as the mayor Protem Coops, he recused himself as to 15617 through 15639 Bellflower Boulevard. And as a council member, Dutton, he recused himself as to 17440 Bellflower Boulevard. And with that, it is 7:03 by my watch, and I am calling this meeting in order. Tonight, we will be considering one item on cannabis tax rates, one item for consideration on local campaign contribution limits, thirteen contained calendar items, and we will not be considering ordinances or resolutions this evening. Before we begin, please note that all public meetings will be recorded when a participant logs in via the computer or calls in to join the meeting. Their name and or phone number will be visible to all participants. Unless you are providing public comment, your audio will be muted and your video will be disabled. Persons wishing to become audience members to the meeting may do so anonymously. Anonymous participants, however, will not be recognized for public comments. Persons who seek to bypass the city's host controls will be dropped and blocked from the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Dutton?
Here.
Councilmember Hamada?
Here.
Councilmember Santiness?
Here.
Mayor Garza?
Here. Thank you for that, Madam City Clerk. Up next, I will be leading us in our vacation this evening, and for our pledge of allegiance, we will be led by Mayor Protem Dan Coops. Please rise. Will you please bow your head? Heavenly Father, we are thankful for so many things as we gather this evening. For friends and for the cooperation we see in this city as we work together to support each other and improve the quality of life for all despite COVID-19. As we begin this meeting, we ask that you guide our thoughts and our actions so that we may have a successful meeting, so that we may accomplish our goals here tonight on behalf of our residents, our businesses, and our community. We ask that you please be with the men and women in uniform in our community and abroad who bravely serve our city and our nation every single day to maintain our peace and our freedom, and that you cover them with your protection, please. We pray these things in your mighty name. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for that, Mayor Protem. Up next, city council announcements and presentations. So let me start off with mine. Our traditional in-person state of the city event will not take place this year. However, a video presentation of Bellflower's annual state of the city will be available for viewing this coming Thursday, October 1st. We are proud to share this modified presentation that highlights Bellflower's current state of the city, what we have accomplished in 2020, and what we have to look forward to in the future. Find the video link on the city's website beginning October 1st or view the presentation prior to the airing of city council meetings on Spectrum Cable TV Channel 36. TV Channel 36. Meetings air on Tuesdays at 7:00 PM and on Thursdays at 11:00 AM, as well as on Saturdays at 11:00 AM. Up next, Mayor Protem Dan Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city of Bellflower invites you to participate in the Bellflower Honors Program. This program offers an opportunity to honor past and present military personnel from Bellflower by dedicating a street pole banner. banners will go up in November and stay up for one year and then be taken and given to the honoree or the family as a thank you for their service. For more information, please contact Mike Machado at (562) 804-1424, extension number 2258, or you can email at mmachado@bellflower.org. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, Mayor Protem Coops. Councilmember Ray Dutton?
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Bellflower recently rolled out the Bellflower Recovery Program, which allowed for restaurants and retailers to take their business outside by applying for a temporary permit. The program has now expanded to include barber shops, salons, nail salons, fitness centers, and personal care services. All establishments must adhere to the guidelines provided by LA County Public Health and apply for a city permit to lawfully operate. For businesses with a wide sidewalk and frontage seeking outdoor space, the Bellflower Business Recovery Program provides modifications to allow for outdoor dining and sales on the sidewalks, also in the parking lots and other right-of-ways. Retail sales are permitted in parking lots and side lots. All applications must be approved prior to business modifications and can be found on our website at www.bellflower.org. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Dutton. Up next, Councilmember Santiness.
Thank you, Mayor. The city's next special and general municipal election will be held on Tuesday, November 3, 2020. On the November 3 ballot will be the election of a council member representing District 4, for which there are five candidates who qualified. Also, all Bellflower voters will have an opportunity to vote on the city's ballot measure, which is Measure M. The last day to register to vote in the November election is October 19, 2020. To register to vote, please log on to www.lavote.net. For more information about this election, voter registration over which council district you reside, please contact the city clerk's office at (562) 804-1424, extension 2271, or via email at cclerk@bellflower.org. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Santiness. Up next, Councilmember Raymond Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first off, good evening, Bellflower. Again, there's only three days left to be counted in the 2020 census. The U.S. Census Bureau has moved up the deadline to complete the 2020 census to this Wednesday, September 30, 2020. I just checked the website, the census website, and Bellflower is at 71.4%. So great job, Bellflower, but we can do better. So you've got a few days left. So under the Constitution, again, every person in the U.S. needs to be counted in the census. And then completing the census can be done several ways: online, by phone, or by mail. Seats in the U.S. House of Representatives are redrawn every 10 years based on changes in the population. It's also used to determine how federal funds are handed out. A conservative estimate is that it is about 1,000 per person per year over 10 years. So let's say, I forgot, which I didn't, to put my daughter on the forum, that's 10,000 that doesn't come back to this community. So if you haven't submitted your questionnaire, take 10 minutes to visit wwwmy2020census.gov or by calling (844) 330-2020. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Raymond Hamada. Great, that was item number nine. Item number 10, public comments. Mr. Stewart?
This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on an agenda item must utilize one of three methods listed on Page 2 of the agenda. You will be given three minutes to address the city council. Attempts to provide comment at times not designated on the agenda may result in the city dropping you for the meeting.
Thank you for that, Mrs. Stewart. So again, this is a time for... So if you would like to speak, please use the raised hand feature. If by computer, it appears under the Participants tab. If by phone app, it will appear under the More button at the bottom right-hand corner. Or if by telephone, please press *9 to raise your hand. You will be called upon by the deputy city clerk in the order received. You can then unmute your microphone so that you can provide your comments. So with that, Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to provide comments during our public comment period?
Yes, Mayor, I have Jason Barnett with Kingdom Causes Bellflower. Mr. Barnett, if you'll give me just a moment to get the timer on the screen, and then you can begin. Go ahead, Mr. Barnett.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and city council and city staff. I just wanted to give an update. I'm Jason with Kingdom Causes Bellflower and Good Soil Industries. We just hired a new case manager and have been working very diligently with our population. And this week, it's really showed. I've had two employees move on to full-time employment. One of them moved on to apprentice factory, making $15 an hour starting. And then the other participant moved on to construction, starting off with Union. And he started off with $15 an hour with the apprenticeship program. And I just wanted to give you guys an update and let you know that we really appreciate everything you guys do. And we are out fundraising and trying to make the program the best that we can. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. It's always a pleasure to hear from you and hear these really just stories of success that are coming out of your organization. So again, thank you for already being part of our community. Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any other members of the public wishing to make public comments this evening?
Mayor, I'll give the public just a moment to utilize the feature. Mayor, I'm not seeing anyone else at this time.
Thank you for that, Madam Deputy City Clerk. Item number 11A, Mr. Stewart?
This is a consideration of possible action to conduct a public hearing to consider adopting Resolution 20-63, a resolution temporarily reducing cannabis tax rates for manufacturing and distribution and suspending annual increases for other cannabis tax rates pursuant to Bellflower Municipal Code Section 3.37.100. The council is aware this item's been around for quite a while. It's been requested by a couple of the cannabis operators in the city to compete with other cities. The staff has done a substantial amount of work on this. Tay Ri has quarterbacked this effort and has consulted with Hita Mosesman from Harris Group. And I both, Mr. Ri and Ms. Mosesman, are here to make the...
Mr. Stewart? Yeah, if I may, before we get to staff report, I would like to recuse myself from this item, even though I don't have an active client in this space. But the firm that I used to work for did previously, and the law dictates that I cannot participate in any discussion under which I had a conflict a year after my conflict ceased to exist. So in my case, I am still within that year period after the fact. And so due to that, I will be recusing myself from this item. And so with that, at 7:16, I am going to pass the gavel on to our Mayor Protem to continue this meeting. Thank you.
So at this point, is Tay going to offer the report? Or is Ms. Moses? Or what are we going to do?
Mr. Ri will make the opening comments, and Ms. Mosesman is here to back him up and finish her report as well to the city council.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Protem and members of the city council. One of the cannabis business permit holders, EEL Holdings, made a request that the city's cannabis tax rates be reduced for manufacturing from the current rate of 7.5% to a range of 2% to 2.5% and distribution from 7.5% to 1% and freeze the tax rate for retail sales, which is currently at 7.5%. EEL cited the tax rates in the cities of Long Beach, Costa Mesa, and Santa Ana as justification, and also discussed lost business opportunities for manufacturing and distribution in Bellflower at the current tax rates. And they claim that these rates are too high. As a result, the city retained Harris and Associates to study the city's overall cannabis tax rate structure for competitiveness with other cities and provide estimated revenue impacts if they were to recommend tax rate reductions and suspension of annual rate increases. Based on their analysis, Harris and Associates recommends that the cannabis tax rates for manufacturing and distribution be temporarily reduced from the current rate of 7.5% to 2% for manufacturing and 1% for distribution, and also temporarily suspend annual increases for all other cannabis tax rates. Harris and Associates determined that even with the tax rate reductions, similar and somewhat higher tax revenues are anticipated for the city due to much greater volume of business activities being forecasted with the lowered tax rates. This table shows the city's cannabis tax rates since inception to the maximum rates. The city currently has 12 active permits for distribution, manufacturing, retail, and cultivation. The permit holders for distribution, manufacturing, and retail are subject to the 7.5% cannabis tax, which is scheduled to increase to the maximum rate of 10% next year on July 1st. For the cultivation permit holders, they're subject to the tax rate of $17.50 per square foot per year for non-nursery canopy space, and this rate is scheduled to increase annually to the maximum rate of $25 per square foot plus CPI adjustments. The current permit holders do not utilize any space for nursery cultivation at this time. This table shows the cannabis tax rates of other cities in comparison with Bellflower. Harris and Associates review these tax rates in making their recommendation to reduce and freeze Bellflower's tax rate. From this table, you can see that for Long Beach, Costa Mesa, and Los Angeles, the tax rates for distribution and manufacturing are 1% to 2%, when Bellflower's tax rate is much higher at 7.5%. For retail and cultivation, Harris and Associates felt that the current tax rates are reasonable, but they should not be increased in the future with the annual adjustment. Harris and Associates provided tax revenue projections based on two different scenarios. Scenario 1 assumes a tax rate freeze, and Scenario 2 assumes a tax rate freeze, but with the rate reduction for manufacturing to 2% and distribution to 1%. Per the analysis by Harris and Associates, the lower tax rates will result in similar and somewhat higher tax revenue due to much greater volume of business activities forecasted. They estimate a 10-year difference in the range of $1.7 million to $3.9 million, which would be an annual average of $168,000 to $388,000. This table shows the projected annual tax revenues under the two scenarios for the 10-year from 2021 to 2031. As you can see, Scenario 2 has higher tax revenues than Scenario 1, even with the tax rate reduction. The cumulative 10-year difference is shown at $1.7 million to $3.9 million. The columns that are marked low are conservative estimates, and the high columns are highly optimistic estimates. Harris and Associates also provided their assumptions and calculation details in their report. The city currently has 12 active cannabis business permits held by five separate entities. Medicine Woman holds three permits. Joint Forces holds four permits. BBNY holds one permit. EEL Holdings holds three permits, and Caliva holds one permit. The city council's authority to suspend or reduce the cannabis tax is provided in Bellflower Municipal Code Section 3.37.100, which states that the city council may suspend or reduce tax rates imposed by this chapter by resolution after a public hearing. Staff recommends that the city council consider opening the public hearing, take testimonial and documentary evidence, and after considering the evidence, adopt Resolution Number 20-63, temporarily reducing cannabis tax rates for manufacturing to 2% and distribution to 1% and suspending annual increases for all other cannabis taxes pursuant to Bellflower Municipal Code Section 3.37.100. Resolution Number 20-63 allows the city council to increase any other cannabis tax rates to the maximum allowed under the Bellflower Municipal Code, Chapter 3.37, at any time, or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. This concludes my report. We have to answer any questions. We also have Ms. Hita Mosesman from Harris and Associates and Mr. Elliot Lewis from EEL Holdings for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Let's start off. You can take some questions from the council. Are you available for that?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Santiness, we'd like to lead off. You're our accountant.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Tay, or the first question I have is for Ms. Mosesman. On Page 11 of 14 of the staff report, where you have, it's titled Table 7. So my question is, can you explain the methodology? I can understand that you're assuming that with the reduction in the tax rate, you're assuming that there's going to be significant increase in the volume, whether it's manufacturing, distribution, or retail. I think that's a basic assumption that you mentioned in your report, that the business operating at 75% capacity. But my question is specifically on the column says Distribution. If you look at the low column, compared to Table 6, at current 7.5% versus 1%, the low revenue went down compared to the projection on using at 7.5%. Can you explain that column?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. So what you're seeing there on Table 7 is the fact that we used very conservative assumptions to determine the low end of the range of revenues that you could expect. So even for the Scenario 2, where we looked at the lower tax rates, we tried to be conservative to assume that revenues on the very, very low side, the worst-case scenario, would not increase as a result of the taxes being reduced, or at least would not increase significantly. And so that's why you're...
I thought it was going to go down. Right?
Right, right. So if revenues don't change that much after tax rates were to be reduced, then at the lower tax rate, there would be less tax revenue collected. And that's what you're seeing on that low end because of the tax rate being as low as it is, 1% as opposed to 7.5%.
So you don't expect any increase in volume in spite of the reduction in the rate? Because in all other scenarios for manufacturing, high and low, retail, high and low, and also distribution, high, you all assumed that in the case, the increase, the reduction in the tax rate will more than offset, I mean, the increase in volume will more than offset the reduction in tax rate. So I'm just kind of zeroing in that particular column.
Yes, so we, for distribution and manufacturing, we looked at on the low end some of the numbers that you are reporting today. And so that's where you're seeing those numbers. And in terms of, and you said that you were zeroing in on distribution more so than manufacturing. Is that correct? I just want to make sure.
Yeah, distribution, low column only, low column. Because it seems like it's kind of off-charts, so to speak. All the others were going up. When we reduced the tax rate, all the other columns went up, except for distribution low.
Right, so it's basically the assumptions and the numbers that we used in our analysis, trying to be very, very conservative in terms of looking at the numbers that are being reported by the businesses right now and wanting to try to stay within those same numbers, assuming the worst case or the very lowest scenario. And those are just what the numbers are looking like in terms of actual at this point in time.
So if we did not reduce the tax rate, I mean, the volume will really tank?
That is definitely potential, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. My next question is for Tay. Tay?
Yes.
Okay, do we know the average purchase per customer? So when a customer comes into a retail store, do we know how much is the average take?
We don't have that data.
Do we have that data? Or we don't? Okay, maybe I can ask... EEL, okay, all right. Tay, a follow-up question here. On your chart, Table 3, is it correct that there's no distribution for Long Beach and Costa Mesa? Or am I reading it incorrectly?
Distribution for Long Beach and Costa Mesa?
Yeah, because it's blank on my copy.
It shows at 1%. Long Beach is 1% for distribution, manufacturing, and testing.
Oh, so distribution's also 1%?
Yes.
Okay. It doesn't show on copy? Am I reading correctly?
Show you.
Page 8 of 14?
Page 4.
Oh.
Page 4 of 14.
But you can see it on page 8 of 14.
Oh, page 8 of 14.
Yeah, it shows it, shows Long Beach at 1%.
Oh, okay, all right. Let me go to the head.
Table 3.
Nope. Still not, because that's manufacturing line.
No, it has it broke down. Manufacturing, distribution is at the...
Oh, so it's the same rate?
It's 1% for all those. Just like it's 7.5% for all of Bellflowers.
Yeah, no, what I'm getting at, it's not in the same line as 2% in Los Angeles, so I get confused. Okay, so 1% for Long Beach and then Costa Mesa, 1%?
Correct.
For distribution, okay, all right. And then Santa Ana is 6%, right?
Santa Ana is 6% for distribution, yes.
Okay. All right, that's all I have for now, and I'll ask more questions later. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
I got to turn my mic.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I heard, thank you. I can add the same question as Sunny about that one column. So I heard the response. I'll probably save a question for about the industry if they're... I'll probably save a question for, about the industry if they're on tonight. But again, you know, we've, you know, we took the bold step to, you know, control cannabis and then again add recreational, you know, things have picked up and I think this is part of the fine tuning of, of the industry as we see it moving along. And I kind of took this as a sort of a math assignment and saw the, I saw it as, it, it was a reasonable deduction that, that volumes will likely increase as, if, if the tax is lowered and we can be competitive with some of the other surrounding cities. The one question either for Tay or for Heda, again, just that, that fixed rate of the three percent annual increase, is, is that... That's just a minimum standard, what, again, what you mentioned, a very conservative approach, just to say, okay, there's a basic number we can figure on, on increasing. But again, obviously, we don't, you know, know what the future holds, but in this industry, definitely could fluctuate any time. So just maybe just to hear a little more on that constant three percent.
And I can, I can address that. So in our analyses, various analyses that we've done over the years since the, the ballot measure was passed, we did take a look at other cities in the state as well as other cities in other states who had allowed recreational cannabis even earlier than California. And so that three percent increase is based on the data that we found in terms of when cannabis is allowed in a community as businesses open and expand, that has been sort of the trend.
All right. Yeah, again, like I said, with, with this industry, maybe in somewhat of a potential con, constant flux, you know, with either increased competition or, whatever, changes in pricing and where the needs are. Yeah, I'd definitely like to hear from, again, some of the, I believe some of the, some of the businesses are on tonight, just one, okay. So at least, at least that and could hear how that's going and see what some trends are. So, okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Your homeada, all right, Mr. Dutton.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Coops. I actually talked to two of the cannabis permates and they both pretty much said that Long Beach is, is, is kicking their, you know what? Long Beach being one percent right next door, when indeed he actually has stores in Long Beach and it doesn't, you know, beneficial is to distribute out of Bellflower at seven and a half percent when you can distribute at one percent. So the volume would definitely go up. The need was there, I heard it in their, their voices, of course. Nobody likes paying taxes, you got to take that into consideration. But as a business owner, you could hear the bleeding at the time. You'll see the bleeding that, that seven and a half percent was too high when, when it's one percent in the surrounding cities. And that's all I could really wanted to discuss and let you guys know what I know. That's it, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Ray. One of the things that I think we were always concerned when we initially started discussing cannabis, we got into this situation because we were looking for income. No other reason other than to cause us to have an income stream. So to discuss this is very important just because we're trying to figure out what the, we've learned from our past experience of the last year and a half, two years and how this will go forward in the next ten. And I guess, is Mr. E. Old Holdings on there? Are you listening?
You guys hear me?
All right, there you are.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'm making a motion to open the public hearing.
Pardon me?
I'm making a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All right, so we got a motion in a second and that'll be the order.
Saved by Sunny.
Right, thank you, Sunny. All right, I'd like to ask you what you believe, my, when we look at these charts for ten years, do you believe that your business is going to be in existence ten years from now or the big boy's going to come in and suck it all up?
That's a good question. Cannabis is like dog years, I always say, so every seven, maybe more, you know, seven to ten years in the, in, in other businesses, you know, cannabis does in six months to a year. You know, I've heard some of the commentary. First, I do want to say that our retail business is our most successful one that we have in our entire portfolio. So I'm very happy to report that. I think we did almost just under a million two last month. We're on pace to do about a million one fifty this month at retail. So you guys are going to pick up quite a bit of tax revenue on that. And again, the changes of increasing the hours and the recreational have been instrumental in that. As far as the manufacturing and the distribution goes, you know, there's no doubt that at these tax rates, and I appreciate the, all the analysis and everything, that it, it's going to go extinct. So, you know, we would be, as good corporate citizens, put a few transactions through the manufacturing and distribution, just to, you know, sort of pay homage to the city of Bellflower because we appreciate, you know, the fact that we're open there. But, you know, it, it, it just doesn't work. And, you know, just so you don't think we're orthodoxy, you know, Long Beach had a proposed a raise on actually the retail to cover the, you know, pandemic shortfall. And, you know, I kind of went against the orthodoxy of the industry and agreed, or not agreed, but said that my position would be okay to raise it temporarily. So it, it does work on the retail. We're, we're able to make a profit, nobody likes paying taxes. You know, you guys are easily picking up eighty, eighty-five grand a month from us. It appears that the business is still growing over there, so really happy, you know, about that. The, the issue with the distribution and why I'd be really excited to get the tax rate down, we've run one transaction through there kind of on an emergency basis. We're all the way built out. But a lot of, you know, we chose to build in Bellflower. I love doing business here in Bellflower, we got the whole campus over there. It's the property that I'm most proud of, it's been a labor of love, little by little, we, we get it going. So the big companies, they have their own distribution, but a lot of the small ones don't. So what we want to do is we want to use that distribution facility for our entire retail footprint, which is five right now, but we have seven to eight under construction. So there's no doubt in my mind on that issue that, that the city would see an increase in revenue. And for us, the reason we would want to go direct to the smaller manufacturers and, and, and growers is to get the cost of goods down. And ultimately, this will also create an increase in retail sales as we're finding the prices elastic. So, you know, I'd say, you know, two things on the distribution and manufacturing analysis, but one, on the distribution analysis, the way that we're set up, if we ran through all our stores, which we would do and commit to doing, you know, product that got to all five stores, it got our cost of goods down, we would also raise, I'm very confident, the retail sales. So that's not really factored into this. And then, you know, as far as the manufacturing goes, you know, obviously ideally, we'd like to see one, two's great. That's a huge win, I love it. Same thing, you know, it wouldn't work, it's just a matter of time before we would go extinct. And if you look at some of these other tax rates, ironically, Carson has zero operating manufacturing and distribution businesses that I'm aware of. Santa Ana, to my knowledge, has also zero. They do tax outside vendors that come in and it's created a huge problem between vendors and retailers. Pasadena has no open manufacturers and distribution. So you can see, you know, even though you have this tax chart up here with the higher rates due, and again, I think somebody said, nobody likes paying taxes. We see the city as a pu, a private, a public-private partnership. We have the opportunity to have these licenses and if we run our business correctly for them to be lucrative, we make money, the city makes money. We've been dropping off pretty big stacks of cash the last couple hits. It's going up from there, you know, I think we're on pace to do eleven million and rising next year could be, you know, who knows? I don't like to predict these things, but thirteen, fifteen million is, is in the cars, which is beyond any of our original estimates. So the, the kind of the short answer, and, you know, it, it's really good to put an analysis behind it so you have a baseline. But I'd be confident to say the distribution and manufacturing at the current rates would eventually go extinct. Obviously, we do some transactions, you know, like I said, just to pay homage to Bellflower, but really that would be the only thing. And you have to keep in mind on the distribution, just to highlight how kind of ridiculous the seven and a half percent is, there's some products that you might buy for two thousand and sell for twenty-one hundred or twenty-two hundred. So the, the margins aren't the same, right? We could still make a thirty, thirty-five percent margin after we pay all the taxes on the retail. You know, the seven and a half percent tax on distribution and on the manufacturing is almost the entire pie. They really have small, you know, smaller pies. The price of distillate is way down, the competition is up. And, you know, Long Beach right now is, is, is winning all, all of that business. So what we'd like to do, and I'm very confident that for now, you know, both manufact, in, you know, switching to the manufacturing, I got a line of guys that want me to white label for them, they would love for us to bring their product in, but we can't do it at the seven and a half percent. So we're literally kind of sitting around waiting for this rate to get, to get lowered so that we can, you know, hop to it, do some business. You know, I hate to make projections, it's a really hard thing to predict. But, you know, the, I think the takeaway is with the current rates, no hyperbole, you know, we're going to be extinct. At two percent and one percent, we would, we could live with that and I think it would be a huge win, you know, not only for us, you know, but for the, you know, the, the city as well. You know, there's always another way to make more revenue, I don't want to overreach, but, you know, ten PM across the board, we've calculated that out to, you know, another forty, fifty grand a month. You know, we make two thousand, twenty-five hundred in that last hour in Santa Ana. We've seen a lot of Long Beach business coming in from nine to ten. And to answer, uh, uh, Mayor Sunny's question, our average ticket price in Bellflower is approximately sixty dollars for the retail. And then the, some, it's actually our highest earning store. You know, the, the one by the freeway on, in Long Beach is next. That has a little bit of higher average ticket price, about sixty-seven, sixty-eight. Santa Ana, I think, is the highest in the low seventies. Belmont Shore is right about the same, but Bellflower's volume, it just crushes anywhere else. So even though the ticket price is a tiny bit smaller, it's right about sixty dollars. I actually pulled up the report while I was sitting here just to make sure I was accurate. So that's kind of my, you know, spill in a nutshell. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think this is a win-win. Gives us a chance for these businesses to survive for ten years. The way our business is set up, we can distribute to all our locations, you know, through Bellflower as well as I have four or five potential white label manufacturers on deck that aren't going to be able to operate at the seven and a half percent. So, you know, I don't want to say it's an easy decision anytime, you know, you're, you're, what's modernizing the tax code, let's say. You know, you know, it gets a lot of scrutiny, but, but here I'm confident the city will make more money and will be better, better for the businesses. And I want to continue the public-private partnership that, that we have going with the city of Bellflower.
Thank you for that. Any questions of Mr. Elliot? Sunny, would you like to go to start?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem. Mr. Lewis, thank you so much for your testimony and also congratulations for being able to open your shop, although you were the last one to get the, the license for retail. So that was a, a good accomplishment. So, thank you for answering my question about the, the average purchase of sixty dollars. The way you see the chart here, I'm looking at Table Three. I, I think the competition here is Long Beach. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, that's correct. So Costa Mesa, now people are starting to move there. There is a little competition popping up in LA. But the great part about the chart, I know, and look, I could be potentially missing one. I'm very confident there's no open businesses in Carson. And the reason that is, is because what they did with the taxes. Pasadena, no open. Santa Ana, I'm not aware, there might be a one-off manufacturing, but, you know, generally all the business now has moved to Long Beach. So not only does this chart illustrate the competition, it, it, it further illuminates the, the, the problem with the, the, the high taxes that essentially these, these, you know, additional, not on this chart too, you have Linwood and Montebello. I forget their exact rates, we're going to be pretty close to what they are. I think Linwood is two and one and a half, don't quote me. Montebello is about the same. So, you know, all those businesses in those areas are going there. And, you know, when, when some, you know, the, the manufacturing has potential to be, you know, I, again, I don't want to, you got to kind of see how these things go, it's a little bit of guesswork. But, you know, nobody's going to pay, you know, seventy, eighty percent of their profit in, in taxes. So ultimately, yeah, Long Beach is the main competition. They kind of got the first jump on it. You know, we, we took a, you know, a leap of faith building there in Bellflower and we were really happy. We had the whole property, we rewarded the retail license. We, we got the certificate of occupancy, we're ready to roll. And just as kind of a little side note, harvest season is coming. There's always great deals in October, November time. So, you know, we think we could really put it to use. So even, you know, the biggest experts, you know, people in the industry, you know, kind of guessing exactly where it's going to land is, is tough. But again, it will, it, it just wouldn't function. And, you know, we don't, you know, where this, the city might make, you know, close to a million bucks or whatever it is off us at the retail end this year. And, you know, as soon as you get into the idea that, hey, it's a public-private partnership, they're just one of our partners and we have the opportunity to make all, you know, the money on the other side, it hurts a little less bad to, to drop it off. But to answer your question, Long Beach is definitely the main competition.
Okay, so focusing on, on the, on the retail side of the business, you also have a store in Long Beach, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so are, are you selling, are you selling similar products between Long Beach and Bellflower?
Yes, we, we almost have the exact same menu. Just oddly, there's some like idiosyncrasies, but without boring you, it's the same products. Bellflower sells a little more flower, Belmont Shore is a little more CBD creams, Santa Ana does a little more vapes, but we sell all this, the, the same products. The short answer is yes.
Okay, so how about the quality of your products compared to the competition? Am I correct to assume that the quality of the products that you're selling is similar or even better than the competition?
Yeah, I, I think we have the best menu at the best price in the entire industry. You know, we're, we're, we, we run really lean and mean. We don't have high corporate overhead. And the other thing is we have a lot of purchasing power now. So my big advantage and why the distribution really fascinates me is another opportunity to make profit, you know, at the Bellflower retail as well as the distribution center and beyond, is distributors right now, you know, they, they do, you know, whatever fifteen, twenty percent markup. We think that we could do a mark, the markup at a lesser amount, is basically pass it on as a cost to the vendors and then we would essentially get the, the product into the store for cheaper. We could pass that on to the consumer and in, in, increase our ability to bring in customers. So I, I'm very confident to say that of who's out there, and I think a lot of the reason we're doing really good, we have great relationships with the vendors, we buy in bulk, we have a very wide variety menu, we deal with all the top venues, vendors and because of our bulk purchasing power, we're able to out-price everybody. And, and keep in mind as well, you know, the, the illicit market has receded a little bit, but it's still probably thirty, thirty-five percent. So we're also competing against them. So any edge that we can get, I'm sorry, I said that backwards. The legal market's only thirty, thirty-five percent. So any edge we can get against, against them on a price that's really elastic, you know, two, three, four percent cost of goods is a lot. And as we grow, you know, that is our advantage. And to kind of circle back to Mr. Coops's question, it's really hard to predict what's going to happen in ten years, but I do think there's going to be a critical mass, people will consolidate, there's not going to be a lot, a lot of mompa shops. So, you know, we're really cognitive of trying to extend, expand our footprint, which in turn increases our purchasing power. By increasing our purchasing power, we're able to buy from vendors at a cheaper price and be successful. And having a distribution that's in-house, that's viable, that would go to all these stores, you know, really helps us out. And then Bellflower picks up all that distribution revenue. It wouldn't exist otherwise. At seven and a half percent, this conversation, or even at two, you know, the conversation, you know, isn't really worth having. Ideally, we'd like to see manuf- Ideally, we'd like to see manufacturing at one percent, but I won't be a greedy pig, it still works at two percent. And I'm pretty confident, again, we can get four or five white labelers, and we could always leverage our shelf space. So people love to get on our shelf space, um, they love to be carried by us, you know, we do promos for them. We have, you know, patient appreciation days for them, we have a lot to offer. So with these two businesses, particularly for EO Holdings, we're able to bring people in because we can leverage our retail footprint through the manufacturing. Make their products for them, you know, throw their name on it. Um, so there's just so many opportunities that, you know, are there, you know, predicting exactly what it is is hard to say. But you would be opening up, uh, a door from, you know, extinction to, you know, who knows what it could be. And I, I think, you know, when we came and predicted at the meeting, you know, we said the Bellflower retail would be four million a year. You know, if I had to predict this year, I'd say ten, eleven, only because we're ramping up. But I'd say next year it could be thirteen to fifteen million, uh, in revenue. So we're, we're overjoyed with how well, uh, that, that location there has performed.
Okay, one, one more question, Mr. Lewis, uh, on your Bellflower store, um, where are your customers coming from?
Uh, you know, uh, we, we, the last analytics we did, they come from all over. So, you know, kind of the interesting thing, uh, is when we first started, we thought our Belmont Shore location would be our, our, our best location. But the, the, the limitation there is that eighty-six percent of the people come from the neighborhood, and there's not a lot of parking. So what we found is our two best locations, the one on Cherry and the four oh five. And only about, uh, forty-five percent to fifty percent are coming within a mile or two of the business. So they're jumping off the freeway, going from Orange County to LA, they like our product, it's a convenience transaction. Bellflower's a lot the same way. And, you know, Bellflower being the first mover, I think is going to prove to be really smart, because it's hard to rip away customers. So we're getting guys all the way up and down the ninety-one, even from the inland empire. We haven't ran it lately, but I would say over fifty percent, because of, are around fifty percent, don't quote me, I'll, I'll go back and get the latest analytics. Are actually coming from neighboring cities on their way to work, you know, a guy going from, you know, Los Alamos, also Los Alamos, uh, Cypress, Cerritos, Downey. Uh, you know, I could go on, they, you know, they all have, uh, currently have Lakewood, they all currently have bands. And then you'd be surprised, even as you get further east and guys are traveling into LA, they jump off Lakewood Boulevard, they come in, they know we want to move our line quick. We have the best menu, at the best prices, they got a hundred places to park in. So, uh, we have a really, uh, far pull, it's, it's, uh, uh, surprising, you know, kind of my initial hypothesis. And having been experienced now in the industry for about four or five years, what makes a good location? And like I said, Bellflower is our crown jewel as it sits today, it's outperforming, uh, any of our stores, it's the highest earned, in short, in the shortest period of time.
Did you lose you?
Can you hear me?
Oh, you're still there, okay, so let me just clarify, so what you're saying is because of the location, uh, Bellflower is your best performing store, is that correct? Did I hear you say that?
Yeah, so last month, uh, you know, uh, Bellflower, I think, did it net, this doesn't count the tax money, that, uh, we, you know, on top of that. But we did a net of a, about a million, one sixty is my recollection. Um, I think Cherry and Santa Ana barely touched a million. And then, you know, Ballpark, lo- uh, the Belmont Shore was like eight hundred and fifty thousand, and the one we opened on East Side is about seven hundred and fifty thousand. So, yeah, it's fifteen percent outperforming, uh, any of the other locations, and nobody ever has to find a place to park. And I'm like, you know, I'll, I'll look in on the surveillance, and if I see a line, I get on the staff. So, you know, I see it as a convenience transaction, guys like to get in and out quick. And again, you know, I would put our menu and our prices against, um, anybody in the industry.
Okay, all right, very good, I, I'm glad to hear that, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Raymond Hamada, questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Um, Mr. Lewis, again, thank you for the update, I always like hearing your positivity and enthusiasm, so that's, that's good. Um, uh, looking at the, um, uh, the, we have a table that shows the five businesses, uh, the five cannabis businesses in town. And, um, and looking at the square footages of, uh, the activity type of, of each. You are, uh, number one in the manufacturing category and number two in distribution. Are, are you still working on those square foot, uh, uh, those square footages of, of the tenant spaces? Or have you, are you ready to, to kind of like start, uh, start tomorrow kind of thing, or, you know, within the prescribed time?
No, so, yeah, this is just to kind of give you a little update, I think the retail's six thousand, we scaled it down, and that whole building's about six thousand. The distribution is ready to go, the manufacturing is ready to go. There is some additional square footage in the manufacturing that's part of phase two. Uh, there's another three thousand feet that's been approved that could be developed. But the current three thousand feet that's been developed, and then we went back around, we even put a full kitchen in there, ran a gas line, uh, uh, back there, it's ready to go. Certificate of occupancy, you know, uh, we ran, uh, you know, just a couple little trial things through there. But, you know, if we get the tax reduction today, that thing could go full speed. The distribution also has a certificate of occupancy, there's about another fifteen hundred feet or so in that building that we would expand to also. So like I said at the very first council meeting that I came to, you know, it's my objective to, it, develop the entire, uh, property as a cannabis campus. Uh, we've come a long way, uh, we're almost down to the end, but all three of those businesses have, the retail obviously being the one that's thriving now. The manufacturing and distribution have a certificate of occupancy, nothing else needs to happen. Manufacturing, we could add an additional three thousand feet in the back there and see. And I think distribution, don't quote me, maybe another, you know, twelve, fifteen hundred feet, um, that we could, uh, add to that. And then I think that would be one of the most impressive campuses, uh, in the Southern California cannabis industry, anywhere, uh, that you look. I mean, it's the first place that I take any investors, um, or, you know, if I want to show a, a, a political person in another city. I mean, it's, it's, it's really our, our, uh, pride and joy, but both of those are, are ready to go. And, you know, again, I don't like to overpromise, um, but i- if, if they turned it on by lowering the taxes, the two and one, we'd start really picking up business there. Then it's like any other business, you know, you got to r- ramp it up, kind of figure out the kings, see how you're going to work it, get your systems in place. Um, you know, get all your, your staff going, but I'm very confident that we can really make that thing, uh, crank like we did the retail.
So, uh, it, it sounds pretty clear from you that, uh, you know, reduce the tax means, means the volumes will tremendously increase, which will then bring, uh, uh, greater revenue. So that's, that's clear to you, and, uh, yes, yes, you can't promise that, but, uh, uh, you seem very confident. And, and, and I know that, again, I think, uh, again, your operation was, was one of the quickest to get established. And, and, uh, you, e- even though you got the late start on, on some things, but, uh, uh, you are moving things along. And, uh, so, yeah, uh, those numbers that, uh, maybe you heard earlier, uh, it's, you are pretty confident that it, you, all you see is, uh, just, um, just increases.
Yeah, the, the one thing I could say, and I don't like to use the word a hundred percent, uh, but I'm not a hundred percent confident what they could, what the ceiling could be. But I'm as close to a hundred percent confident that the city will make more money. Like I said, it's seven and a half percent, they eventually go extinct, we run it through a few courtesy transactions, um, just to, you know, uh, be good corporate citizens of Bellflower. And that, that's really all they would be good for, that's no hyperbole. Uh, under this lower tax rate, you know, sky's the limit. But one thing I could say with as close to a hundred percent certainty as possible, and I don't say things, uh, like that without, you know, uh, feeling very strongly about them. The revenue is going to go up for, for the city of Bellflower, uh, unequivocally. It's, it's, you know, and, and it, the, the, the accounting firm did the best they could, it's a little theoretical with the information they had. But, you know, I think the one big factor again, is they're going to go extinct otherwise. And, and they're basically already would be extinct at those tax rates, they just don't, uh, you know, function, you know, with, if we wanted to run products. You know, we, and we don't want to find alternatives, and I'm not saying it like that, but, uh, I, with this close to a hundred percent confidence, i- I could say that the revenue is going to go up. What they could ultimately earn and how, how that ceiling is, and, you know, what we can do, um, you know, uh, you know, will we hit the high side of that estimate? Would we blow through it, uh, remains to be seen. But I don't really see a downside here for Bellflower for modernizing the taxes, just because the seven and a half doesn't work. So whatever you do is going to be, uh, a, a windfall in, in, in revenue. And like I said, this is a public-private partnership, and as we've been working on this process, um, we've learned a lot together. You know, we tried the medical, I even thought at the time of medical, oh, we might be able to make it work. And all those changes, uh, have proven to be very wise and very lucrative for the city. And, you know, I would put this right in the same category.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada, Mr. Dutton.
I don't have much to, uh, I get it, um, but the public hearing's still open, we might want to ask the audience if there's any, anybody else in the public want to speak.
So Madam Deputy City Clerk, do you have anybody on the line that'd like to give some questions or testimony here?
Uh, yes, Mayor Protem, Ms. Priscilla Brown would like to present public comment. Ms. Brown, if you'll give me just a moment to get the timer on the screen, and then you can be- begin. Go ahead, Ms. Brown.
Ms. Brown, are you there?
Karen, she's muted.
Are you able to unmute?
I just unmuted her. Ms. Brown, can you hear us?
Yeah, yes, I can.
Okay, um, you can go ahead and begin, thank you.
Okay, um, well, I was saying, I, I know that it sounds like you've all made up your mind, and it's going to be a yes vote across the board, and I go through this every time. You know, I'm going to speak anyway. So, um, this whole cannabis thing is getting just a little ridiculous. These, all these, um, people came in when they got their permits, and they signed the paperwork. It showed the hours, the rates, um, everything, if he thought this was going to not work without rate, I, that tax rate, I don't know why he signed his paperwork. I don't know why he asked for a permit, I don't, yeah, I mean, he sounds like he knew this from the very beginning. He's got businesses in Long Beach, he's got businesses now in Costa Mesa, I don't know how long he's had that one. But he knows the business, and he knows this wasn't going to work from the beginning. So first of all, you guys all lied about the, um, you, it was going to be medical, that was it. You guys gave in and gave them recreational, because they couldn't make it on medical, okay? That was the first thing. Then they came and they started crying about the hours, so you extended their hours. So that happened, you gave in to that also. So now it sounds like he wants to push it till ten, is what it sounds like he's getting at. And now we're going to reduce the tax rate, because now they're going to cry about that. He knew, and all of these people knew this, when they signed their paperwork. Okay, this isn't, wasn't a surprise to anybody. So I don't know why the city keeps giving, and you're not holding them accountable to what they need to do. He keeps saying this is ready to open, ready to open, ready, then why don't you have it open? There's all these businesses that have these permits, you know, Joint Forces has nothing open. And, yeah, we're getting their, you know, their penalties or whatever you want to call them, um, so they're not even open, they're not opening their doors. Is this going to make them open their doors? No, it's not. So I don't understand why they aren't being held accountable to hold up their end of the bargain, that when they first signed on to do this. But all of you keep wanting to give them more and more and more and more. Okay, they've had their businesses open, they haven't been affected by COVID nineteen, and you've got all these other businesses that have been affected by COVID nineteen, who are suffering. And all they're wanting is you to give them more and more and more, this is getting ridiculous. And unless you guys stop giving, what's the next thing going to be? Oh, if you let us open more retail, you know, and more of these businesses in the city, that, you know, this will be great, then, then you're going to give in to that also? I mean, you guys have got to put your foot down at some point. And he gets up here and he says all these great things, but why aren't the businesses open if he's ready? Do it, he knew the rate, so do it, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I just want to say that, um, I take exception to Mr. Ms. Brown's statement that I voted, uh, for the, um, uh, recreational cannabis. I think you have to check the record with the city clerk, I voted against recreational cannabis, thank you.
Um, Madam Deputy City Clerk, anyone else out there that'd like to talk with us?
Uh, yes, Mayor Protem, I have someone with the phone number of two, three, three, five, nine, six, three. If you could please identify yourself prior to speaking.
Yes, this is Matthew Brown.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Okay, um, I have a few questions, Mr. Lewis is sitting there stimulating that, you know, the revenues have skyrocketed up to eleven million dollars this year. And projected next year, his retail sales of anywhere from thirteen to fifteen million dollars. Well, if the current tax rate has not affected his business, and his business is going to rise, why are we lowering the tax rate? Or even considering lowering the tax rate on retail side? If Mr. Lewis has six thousand square feet of operational facilities to do distribution and/or manufacturing, why doesn't he utilize that at this point in time? Instead of sitting here crying about seven and a half percent? Again, he knew what he was getting into, he knew the tax rate when he signed those permits. And when the permits were authorized and given to him, he knew what days of operation there was, he knew what the hours of operation were. But yet, he sat there and come back to the city and complained, crying on the shoulder. Who was actually running the city? Is it that pot shop? Or is it the city council? Because it looks like to me the pot shop's running the city council on this pot and marijuana business. Now, I do have a, another question is, city of Long Beach has a one percent, um, tax rate. Have they lowered their tax rate to one percent, or it hasn't always been at one percent? And if they lowered their tax rate to one percent, I would like to see the growth data from the initial offering until it went down to one percent. If it hasn't, then why are we going to lower ours? You know, again, they knew the, the risk and reward factor of coming into this industry, he's just blowing smoke up the wazoo, no pun intended. That, you know, everything's going to be peachy king, everything's going to be peachy king. Well, if it's going to be so peachy king, and he's so pissed at this private, uh, public entity, which it's not, it's a private entity that's working in the city and has to get permits to operate. So I don't know why he keeps calling it private-public, it is not anywhere near a public entity. Unless he's offering shares to sell his company, it's not a public entity, it is a private organization. And my last comment is, the establishment there on Artesia, I think it's Joint Forces, why are they not open? Why is the city sitting here waiting on them to open up their doors? Why is the city allowing them to take so much time that they have run out of money? Or what is the problem with them? I mean, I know they're paying their little penance of a penalty, but yet that does not come near to what they were going to be paying in taxes. So why is the city accepting such a, a small penance and a penalty instead of charging them the rate they should have been paying on these taxes? Uh, check that, on the sales that were stipulated, they should have been paying the taxes on that instead of this.
Yep, Mr. Brown, you're three minutes up, and, uh, I'm going to have Mr. Stewart tell you why, uh, Joint Forces hasn't opened yet.
I'm not sure why they haven't opened yet, but, um, they have paid their liquidated damages, which was based on the estimates that they submitted on the revenues that they would generate when they submitted their application. I do know they've made substantial progress, I, I do believe within the next thirty days, they will open their retail side. I don't think they're that close on the, the remaining sides of their business. I presume that their distribution side will, as a matter of fact, I think that's in place now, they're actually doing some distribution. But I don't believe the manufacturing or the cultivation will be online until close to the new year. Now, what the council did with, uh, uh, Joint Forces was they struck a deal with them last year, when they really prevented, they said, okay, you pay the liquidated damages, you can carry on through next December. They have paid the liquidated damages thus far, they're carrying on through this December when they will be reviewed again. What happens this, this, this December, I don't know. What happens this, this, this December, I don't know. I do believe pretty sincerely that if they're not open, they're done. I don't think there's gonna be any more slack cut for them, because frankly, there's a lot of people that'd be interested in those licenses, should they become available. So, that's enough motivation to keep the council interested in them opening, and them, them interested in being open. In answer to Mr. Brown's question about the Long Beach rates, they were higher and they lowered them. Uh, they lowered them to be competitive. I wouldn't characterize, uh, Mr. Brown, your, your comments are well taken, and you and I, you know, we don't disagree on everything, but on this one, I wouldn't characterize as him stamping his feet and saying he doesn't wanna pay the freight. I believe that he's basically telling us that it's not competitive. That he has an option to do his distribution and manufacturing in Long Beach at a location at a lower rate, and he, and he's gonna do so. I think what he's saying to us is, I like the location in Bellflower, it's central. I like doing business in Bellflower, and if the rate were competitive, then he would need more business here. I, I think we could take him at his word on that, and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. But I don't think that this is a showdown in any way, shape, or form. I think it was a, a request, and a request that was taken well by the city, and I think that we did a proper analysis of it. And I believe, based on that request, if it is approved, I think the revenues will go up. Um, he's not reducing his retail. The retail stands back. In fact, the retail went up by two and a half percent this year, and they're still paying it. It went from five to seven point five percent, and they're paying it. That is not going down. What he's talking about is the distribution and the manufacturing only on this. And I have no reason to believe that the report from Harrison Associates isn't accurate, and I believe that was substantiated by, uh, Mr. Lewis from EYL Holdings. And did I answer your questions, Mr. Mayor? I think, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. All right, thank you, Mr. Brown. Uh, Madam Deputy City Clerk, has anyone else like to give testimony?
Mayor Protem, I'm not seeing any other comments at this time.
All right, thank you.
Will we close the public hearing?
All right, you have a motion by Mr. Dutton, a second by Mr. Sanzinez, so be the order. To close the public hearing. You've heard what we've, uh, discussed here, and I think that, uh, it makes sense. Now, uh, this is a question to staff. This, if we vote on this tonight, it's a temporary reducing cannabis, meaning that one year from now, we're gonna revisit this.
It's up to the council. Um, we would recommend it be temporary. We'd recommend that it not carry on past a year. Uh, that at a minimum, you would review, uh, review it, uh, when you reviewed next year's license renewals in December. So I wouldn't carry it on past that.
Now, when the, the suspending the annual increases, now, if we agree to that tonight, then we're not gonna revisit that in a year.
Again, I believe you have the right to review those anytime you want to. Um, and what I would, what, but what I would recommend to the council is that they review all of their tax rates for all four types of uses, and when they renew the, uh, uh, applications for, uh, licenses in December of every year. So I think with, with regard to this one, though, if you go forward with this tonight, what you're saying is you're good with the distribution and manufacturing fees of one and two percent, or one and one, whatever you decide to do, um, through next December, and that then, the following December, twenty twenty-two, that you would, uh, consider all of them, all four rates on that.
When you say this, so that December of twenty, or December of twenty-one?
December of twenty, the, we're basically saying these would be in effect this year. All, everything would carry through to December twenty twenty-one. It's what we'd recommend. You could do whatever you'd like, but that just keeps it easier.
So it'd be a fifteen-month deal?
That's, I think, that's reasonable, and I think that, that's a reasonable amount of time to see whether or not he's gonna perform up to his standards. Um, um, we'll see where it goes. The revenues are good right now from cannabis. We'd like to keep that going. So, uh, if, if you would do it, I think that's reasonable, and again, it, it keeps staff, it keeps everything in order at the same time, if we do it that way.
Well, I, I totally believe what he's telling us on what he will bring to the city. But I think after fifteen months, we could reevaluate to see whether or not his business has increased in a way that he projected.
If that's too far out for some, we could certainly bring that back.
Mr. Mayor Protem, if I may, um, the, the tax rates are scheduled to be reviewed, um, effective July first. I, I think I'd rather keep that.
That's fine. I mean, I'd,
Instead of December, because if you look at table, if you look at table two, the rates increased on July first.
All right, let's keep it that way.
So I, I think I'd rather keep that, so we don't have to muddy up the waters, so to speak.
That's fine, as long as you keep all four. I mean, there's arguments both ways on that. If, as long as you keep all four at the same date, so we can do it all at the same time, it keeps it easier.
Yeah, so if we, if we decide to change the rate for manufacturing and distribution, that will be effective until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
And you're okay with the temporary idea, and then we'll reevaluate in July, what we're doing tonight? And what do you think about?
In terms of timing.
In terms of timing?
Yes.
And then, how about, do you wanna make it, uh, permanent that we reduce all the, uh, suspend annual increases for all the other taxes, or do you wanna revisit those in July, too?
Well, I, I think, uh, if I may, if I wanted, if you want me to discuss this, um, I'm all for competition. Uh, I think we need to be competitive, uh, to draw the, the volume that we desire. Um, and I hear the message from the applicant, uh, of the, um, the proponent of the reduction in tax rate in terms of distribution and manufacturing. Because if you look at the table here, uh, and I emphasize, the competition is really Long Beach. And I, I don't think, uh, we're having any competition from, let's say, uh, Malibu. If you look at the retail, two and a half percent sales tax, I don't think anyone from Malibu's gonna be driving all the way to Bellflower, uh, driving almost forty miles, you know, things like that. Same thing with Santa Ana, Pasadena, uh, and so on and so forth. So Long Beach is the real competition. Um, so I'm okay with the distribution, the way it was proposed, and then the manufacturing. What I would like the city council to consider is the retail. Because supposed to, supposed to increase to ten percent as of July first, twenty twenty-one. And the staff recommendation is to bring, to suspend that increase and keep the seven and a half percent. Uh, so in really looking into this, I would propose to increase it to eight percent. Not the ten percent, but eight percent, and still be competitive with Long Beach, because Long Beach is eight percent. So I don't think there's anyone, a customer will be driving a lot of distance just to save one half of one percent. And if you, if you heard what, uh, Mr. Lewis said, I asked him, what's the advantage of Bellflower? It's the location. So I don't expect customers from Long Beach coming to Bellflower anyway. I think they're coming from the west, from the east, and from the north. So I think I want to capture that. But at the same time, I don't want to give away the store by, by suspending the total increase of two and a half percent. So what I would recommend is increase it to eight percent. Instead of ten, as of July first, twenty, yes.
And how about the other, uh, percentages that you saw they were increasing each year?
Well,
Across the bottom.
Because we need to revisit that anyway.
Right, so we revisit them on July first as well?
As of July.
Just to make it easy. We can revisit all of them in July.
Yes, exactly. That's what I proposed earlier.
I hate to suspend that whole bottom line.
I think, I think we oughta hold it back to July, to, to Ju- June thirtieth, the twenty twenty-one, and we'll do it a few meetings before that. So we have that data.
Right, exactly.
So we have that data.
But effective July first of that year.
I don't wanna give the situation of licenses being reviewed at different times.
Right.
Let's do them all in June, sometime in June, yeah.
You know, then we'll see what the competition is, because the competition could change again.
Right.
I think we oughta do, do that adjustment if necessary then.
Similar to the table on table three, we can ask for the same study for next year. Okay, that's my recommendation.
All right. Mr. Hamada, what do you think?
Well, the, um, look at the evaluation of economics for cannabis is, is part of the role here, and, um, uh, I think to wait till twenty-one, June, you know, the, uh, next year to, uh, you know, to consider any, uh, mo- modifications, uh, I'd go along with that, because again, this reso says we can change it anytime, so, um, so if something comes up, if, if, like I said, that's why I asked about constant, uh, 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 increases, that, you know, it, it, we could do a, do a whole different, uh, you know, roller coaster, so, um, I think, uh, to let it, I mean, to go along with the, again, two and one, that, that's fine. I think it's gonna, it's, it's gonna improve the, um, uh, the revenue based on volume. And for now, I'm, I'm okay with the seven and a half for this year until the end of June, and then in twenty-one.
Anything else?
Uh, that'll be all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Just a clarification on the, the, it's an annual increase for retail, and that's January first, or is it July first? July first, okay, just.
Look at the table on table, table two.
Four.
On page three.
There it is, yeah, okay, got it.
They renew their license in January, but they renew, you know, when we collect their fees.
Mm-hmm.
That's January. That'll remain the same.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion, adopting resolution number twenty dash sixty-three, a resolution that temporarily reduces cannabis tax rates for manufacturing and distribution. And, uh, waiting to see till, uh, mid-year, uh, June thirtieth, the twenty twenty-one for the, uh, the rates.
Can I clarify, can I clarify a little bit?
Yes.
Would you amend the motion to say that you would amend, uh, you would state the manufacturing and distribution, I think distribution of one, manufacturing at two, or one, currently?
No, I don't wanna, no, currently, we wanna, we wanna ma- move the resolution already temporary reducing the cannabis rates for manufacturing and distribution to the two and the one percent.
Got it, so then,
That's, that's in the resolution twenty dash sixty-three.
The only other amendment.
Yeah, I'm, uh, amending where, where the, the reso is, is suspending the annual increase. We wanna evaluate that.
Correct. About July.
So instead of, uh, suspending, um, I'll put evaluating the annual increase, uh, mid-year.
Prior to July first, twenty twenty-one.
Prior to twenty, yeah. Because, you know, other cities may, if we do something now, something might change. We might have made the wrong decision. Some other cities may have adjusted something, so we wanna stay with the competition.
So, Mr. Mayor Protem, and members of the council, that would be a small alteration to section two of the resolution. We would put a period rather than a comma after the word respectively, and remove the rest of the sentence, because you would simply reevaluate next year in any event.
I was about to say that. Strike, strike the last, um, the last phrase, um, starting, starting with the word "end", right?
So anybody got support for the motion?
I'll second the motion.
All right, right. So we have a motion by Mr. Dutton, a second by Mr. Sanzinez. As amended. As amended. And we all understand what that motion is. Please poll the council.
Mayor Protem Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanzinez?
Aye.
All right, we're gonna, uh, wait a moment for the mayor to return, so he can conduct the rest of the meeting. Please note the mayor has returned.
Thank you for that, Mayor Protem. Um, item number twelve, we have none. Item number thirteen A, Mr. Stewart.
This is consideration of possible action to provide direction regarding local campaign contribution limits, and I believe the city clerk has a representation for you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Good evening, mayor and council members.
Can I, uh, but in a minute, can we expand that picture?
We, we, we tried a bit ago.
Right, I saw you working on the last one.
Can you, can you, can you read it?
I can't read it at all, so, I'm closest.
So sorry. I am gonna, I am gonna read through the slides for you, um, and then you can work on any questions. Um, so, beginning of January one, twenty twenty-one, Government Code Section eight, five, seven, oh, two point five, um, added by AB five, seven, one, provides that, uh, the default campaign contribution limits for elective county and city offices will be those established by the Fair Political Practices Commission, or FPPC, for identical elective state offices. And two violations will be punishable as a misdemeanor and subject to specified penalties. Uh, why this change, per AB five, seven, one, most states impose limitations on contributions to candidates for elective county and city offices. California is among the minority of states without these contribution limits. Uh, potential changes, per AB five, seven, one. Oh, thank you.
How about me?
I, I, I have, I have one extra copy. Sorry about that. So, uh, here on the chart, which is very small, um, but I will read for you, are the potential changes per AB five, seven, one. Um, currently, we do not have contribution limits in the city. And contribution limits beginning January one, per AB five, seven, one, would be limited to three thousand dollars per person per election. Um, campaign committee to campaign committee contributions would be limited to three thousand per election, and personal loans would be limited to a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the FPPC will adjust the contribution limits in January of every odd-numbered year to reflect the increase or decrease in the cus- consumer price index. Those adjustments will be rounded to the nearest one hundred dollars. The city does have options. Um, the city may impose its own campaign contribution limitation standards by ordinance or resolution, and these may differ from the FPPC. Or the city may follow the default contribution limits amount set by the FPPC, which will be the same amount as for the state elected officials. Uh, we do want to note here that if the city does adopt its own limits, the city, not the FPPC, will be required to enforce those local regulations that will result in additional administrative and legal costs. So the recommendation, um, tonight is to receive and file the report, and to report, uh, sorry, provide direction regarding imposing campaign contribution limits. Either to take no action at this time and default contribution limit amounts will be the same amount as for state elected officials, or, uh, B, direct that a resolution or an ordinance memorializing the city council's determination on limiting campaign contributions to a specific amount be brought for adoption at a future meeting. Or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item. That concludes my presentation, and I will be happy to answer questions, and also lean on the city attorney.
Thank you for that, Mayor.
I got a question, Mayor.
Yes, please.
Yeah. Well, it's fresh in my head. Which, uh, three thousand dollars was very, is very gracious for a personal contribution. Does that include corporate? Is that three thousand? It says personal. What about corporate donors or business donors? Doesn't say anything that I can see in the,
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll help the city clerk out with that particular one. Uh, the US Supreme Court has determined that corporations are persons, and so the term "person" would include both corporate entities and actual individuals, however they, they appear. So, the three thousand dollar contribution limit would apply to both.
Thank you. I didn't know corporates are persons, but when it comes to paying taxes, they're not. Yeah, yeah, a funeral, too? That, that was all I had.
Yeah, just that one question.
That was my only question.
Okay, great. Um, so, uh, how about Mayor Protem, Dan Coops?
I'm, uh, I guess I'm leaning towards, I hate that for the city, they have to get involved in enforcing this decision. Um, personally, I've never received that much money, so I don't think that it's applicable to me on an individual basis. Um, I would probably go with the state's suggestion and not set up our own, uh, imposing contribution limits. That's just my thoughts.
Thank you for that, Mayor Protem. Um, how about, uh, Councilmember Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, again, uh, look at defining person again. Does that include yourself?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a, that's an interesting question. Uh, there are, are two separate US Supreme Court cases that may be in conflict with, when it comes to applying these particular regulations. One is the Citizens United case that was decided in twenty-ten, which made a determination that corporations are indeed persons, and so it's a First Amendment right for those persons to contribute what they will to, to campaigns. The other is a, uh, case from the nineties, which is, uh, the first name of it is Buckley, and I forget the, off the top of my head, the, the second party's name. That's a suggestion that individual candidates can spend as much money as they want to on their own campaigns, uh, without any limitation. Now, one of the regulations, Now, one of the regulations that was not reviewed by the city clerk at this particular moment, simply because it wasn't really applicable, there's a cap on a hundred thousand dollars in terms of how much an individual can loan to their, his or her own campaign, and that's at a state level. And so it's a open question for the courts at some point as to whether or not that one hundred thousand dollar limitation in terms of being able to loan to your campaign is an unconstitutional infringement upon First Amendment rights or not. That's a very long way of saying, I can't tell you definitively.
Well, one hundred K is quite a bit. I don't see that being spent on a local. The other comment in the staff report, again, allowing carryover. Carryover of campaign, is it just campaign expenditures? Or is that the fund itself? You know, to switch it over then to the next election?
So, the, it would apply to campaigns for your, well, there are two different questions, really, in your one question. One is, if you're a candidate for, say, the school board, and now you're running for the city council, can you carry over your, your campaign funds from the school board fund to your council candidate fund? And, and the probable answer to that question is, if you do it before January first, you're free and clear. After January first, the question becomes, well, is that a three thousand dollar contribution from your one fund to your next fund? That also is an open question, because we don't know yet, because this law hasn't taken effect yet and hasn't been litigated yet, so I can't answer definitively. But if you have that situation, I suggest you do it before January first. If it's after January first, since you already hold the office, it's more than likely that the FPPC will take the position that you already hold the office, and you can roll over your campaign funds from one city council candidate fund to another city council candidate fund, because it's your own fund. You've already raised those funds.
All right. Thank you. You got most of it. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much for that. Councilmember Hamada, Councilmember Santenaz?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, just a couple of, just one question here. Is there a limit on the contribution from a person to a campaign committee? Or does it fall under the three thousand dollar limit?
The answer to the question is that this is specific to individual candidates and not necessarily to, for example, ballot measures. And so that three thousand dollar limit is only to the individual campaigns, not to, to ballot measures.
Yeah, well, the reason why I asked it is, in the chart here, it says campaign committee to campaign committee, three thousand dollar limit. So I was kind of expanding that quest, that idea.
And, and so there is a differentiation between individuals versus ballot measures. And we could also have a long discussion about the difference between soft money and hard money in terms of how these regulations apply to hard money. So, the, these are so-called hard money regulations, meaning that these are specific funds that are going to one particular candidate's candidate, fund, as opposed to soft money, which is all the ads that you're currently seeing on TV, which doesn't necessarily define or identify any particular candidate, but there's a strong implication about which side of the fence that that particular advertisement is on. That's so-called soft money, which is pretty much unlimited. So you can send as much money as you want to, to a political action committee, which will generate a particular ad, which is obviously in favor or against one particular issue or one particular candidate, but they never identify what that is.
And I, I just want to, oh...
Oh, I was gonna add to that, just really quick. On the chart where it was listed as campaign committee to campaign committee, meaning at times, one committee candidate or otherwise will contribute to another candidate committee, and those would be limited to the three thousand.
Three thousand, okay. And I just want to point out that I haven't received any three thousand dollar contribution to my campaign, and I don't have a hundred thousand dollars to loan to my personal, to my committee, so... And, and most importantly, I think the city has better things to do than police this contribution. So, I would be in favor of just following the state law. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Santenaz. I don't have any questions. I think everything's been answered. So, with that, if, any other questions, Councilmember? Okay.
No questions.
So, with that, why don't we open it up for public comments on item thirteen A? Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to make comments regarding this evening's item thirteen A?
Mayor, I'm not seeing any public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you for that, Madam Deputy City Clerk. And with that, gentlemen, any final questions, comments regarding item thirteen A? If not, I'll continue the motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion to receive and file item thirteen A.
Great.
And the motion of Sunny.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Santenaz, and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Coops. Without any further discussion, roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Santenaz?
Aye.
Mayor Garza?
Aye.
Thank you for that, gentlemen, and Madam City Clerk. Item, is it item number fourteen now? So, any, anybody wish to pull any items from the today's consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item fourteen H.
Okay, so I have item fourteen H. Is that for just questioning or actual se- separate consideration?
Separate consideration, I believe. It could be, this could be a discussion.
Okay, perfect. So, for separate consideration?
Uh, just a couple, just for questions, fourteen F and, and also fourteen H.
Which one was the first one, Councilmember, sorry?
F, fourteen F.
Is that for separate consideration or just questioning?
No, just, just, just a question.
Questions, okay. Great. And I know fourteen H is already pulled. Gentlemen, you good? Okay. So for me, I'm hoping to pull item fourteen G. And these are just informational, not for separate consideration. Fourteen G, fourteen I, and fourteen L. And again, just for information on that separate consideration, so why don't we start off with, why don't we start off with item fourteen F for Mr. Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jim, I see you're on, on the call, so, hey, Jim, just quickly on this, from our last discussion, from our last meeting, when, you know, the funds that were available, we had mentioned that, again, how you're going to get the word out there or, or, you know, try to confirm who, who needs it. And, and there were some comments that maybe contacting some of our local, probably multiple local, you know, property managers. So, have you started any of that yet?
We have. We've, we've used our business license software that the city uses to narrow down the list of what's realtors and other type of businesses to our, just our property management firms. And we'll be sending out emails to those that have email, and then letters, regular mail, to those that we don't have emails to, to let them know of this program for their tenants.
Okay, thank you for that update, Jim. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, on that.
Item fourteen F then. So, for me, item four, first up is item fourteen G. Item fourteen G is regarding a new traffic signal installation on Bellflower Boulevard and Harvard Street. I was wondering if, if either Mr. Gorecki or Mr. Inges would be able to just give us a preview of what this is gonna encompass for the benefit of our public?
Uh, yeah, good evening, councilmember, mayor and councilmember. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, so, fourteen G is the, the award of contract for the traffic signal that would be placed at Bellflower and Harvard Street. This was a signal that was designed along with the, the development of the Aldi store there. The, that will be the main location that their trucks are able to go in and out of their back delivery area. And it presents the, the opportunity for us to control that intersection along with the crosswalk using a, a traffic signal there. So, the, the project was designed a little over six or seven months ago. It includes the decorative traffic signal poles that we see throughout the Bellflower Boulevard corridor. And it also will include a durather crosswalk at that location that will match the crosswalk similar to the downtown area.
Thank you for that, Mr. Gorecki. I just wanted to share that with the public. I know that we have a lot of improvements going on in our city, and again, that's just another one. I think it'll be a nice connectivity between the two shopping centers that are right there. And again, it provides for a lot of safety with regards to the delivery vehicles and just accessing that area. So, again, thank you to staff. I just want to share that with, with our public. Thank you, Mr. Gorecki. So, moving on to fourteen I, which is the city manager's contract. I just wanted to just share with our public, really, what a fantastic job our city manager does every single day, day in and day out, not only for him and his leadership, but also for his staff that works for him. The city is absolutely blessed to have Mr. Stewart at the helm. And so I just wanted to commend you, Mr. Stewart, for all you do for our city, make sure that it was on public record, and I am more than proud to be a part of extending this contract with you. So thank you for your daily service.
And thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate the kind words.
And with that, item fourteen L, and so this one is regarding the downtown wayfinding signage. And I was wondering if Mr. Delalanga can touch on that a little more for us?
I'm gonna have Anika Miyashiro Ruiz do a little update on that for you, because she is the project manager on this project.
Thank you for that. Welcome, Anika.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. With this wayfinding design manufacturing installation, we released a RFP on August third. We had four complete proposals submitted. After reviewing some of the submittals, we did interviews with the top scorers and selected Blue Media for the agreement. This is actually phase two of the Metro Call for Grants project, and it started upon the completion of the Smart Park system. The city will be doing the, or I'm sorry, the grant total allowed would be for a hundred and eighty thousand with a match of twenty percent on our behalf. So we are hoping that this amount of money will provide some new design for, and create a identity or a brand for our downtown. We're looking at getting two monument signs, approximately fifteen aluminum pole signs, and some custom resin sealed maps for some of the pedestrians. We'll be working to complete the project for March two thousand and twenty-one, and we'll be coming back to city council with some final sketches to discuss on October twenty-sixth. That's it.
Well, thank you for that report again. Another exciting project and, and coming up in our city, so thank you for that. And that completes my polls. Just to confirm, Mr. Santenaz, you're okay if we consider the consent calendar and come back to item fourteen H, correct?
Absolutely.
Great, okay. Just, okay. And so with that, if there's no other polls or questions, I'll consider a motion regarding consent calendar except for fourteen H.
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay. So I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Coops, and a second by Councilmember Hamada. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Santenaz?
Aye.
Mayor Garza?
Aye.
Thank you for that, Madam City Clerk. And finally, let's consider item fourteen H, Mr. Santenaz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your indulgence. I pulled this item because I recall that in the last meeting, I made a motion for the, the penalty, so to speak, for the first, second, third offense, from five hundred to one thousand to two thousand. So, upon reading the, the item for tonight, I saw that the third offense, it was down to fifteen hundred. And so I called staff, and instead of going into a lot of discussion, I want them to kind of explain the reasoning why they are suggesting that it go down to fifteen hundred. At the same time, correct the, the motion that we, that I made at the last meeting. And secondly, I also want to make sure that the, what we approved for tonight will be reflected on, appropriately, on Exhibit A, which is not so clear to me in terms of how it affects Exhibit A. So, I leave it to staff in terms of that question.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll jump in on that, since ultimately I signed off on the resolution. So, to put it very simply, the council did discuss the range of fines between five hundred, a thousand, and two thousand dollars. Now, quite honestly, councilmember made the motion, so he will remember better than I off the top of his head whether the two thousand was part of the motion or not. I'm not going to certainly fight about that. But honestly, the, the only reason for it to show up as fifteen hundred dollars is, is for ease of reference for the administrative fine schedule. You'll see that in Exhibit A, Chapter ten point three zero for unlawful spectators, has a listed fine amount of five hundred, and there are other fine schedules there. And then down below, which follows what the, what the Bellflower Municipal Code requires, is there's an initial fine of five hundred dollars, and then, just like every other fine, for a second offense, that initial amount is doubled, and then for the third offense, that amount is tripled. So the base fine is tripled. And then just mathematically, the five hundred results in a fifteen hundred dollar fine. So if the council wants to make that two thousand dollars the ultimate third in, in subsequent citation, legally speaking, there's, there's no problem with that. Just requires some tinkering with Exhibit A, and, and that's certainly something that we can, can do right now.
Okay. Well, I, I'm not really about the, the two thousand. I'm more of the progressive, because what I was against is, in the first proposal from the last meeting, it was very light. I think it's one hundred, and then goes up to two hundred. So, to me, that's, that's nothing. It, it doesn't become a deterrent. So I'm okay with fifteen hundred as for the third offense. I just want to make sure that our records reflect the agreement among the city council members. That's all.
Great.
Thank you.
So, councilmember, so you are in agreement with what's proposed before us this evening, then? The language as it is?
Right.
Amounts, okay.
And I'm gonna, I want to make sure, because in the minutes, it was two thousand for the third offense, because I had the city clerk, well, I also had the city clerk do the, the recorded, just to make sure. So I was correct. Thank you.
Great. So, any other questions or comments regarding item fourteen H?
No. I'll move fourteen H.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just had a quick question. Just to follow up on the last meeting, I asked a question about any of the, any possible secondary issues that, again, come up with these, you know, renegade events, and, such as graffiti on sidewalks or poles, and, you know, maybe trash and some other things. So has staff looked at that and see? I, I've, I've driven by and stopped at some of these intersections where you can see the obvious markings, and it doesn't appear to be any of the so-called secondary issues unless they've been cleaned up. So, I just wanted to mention that, just if staff did any further review of, of those areas to see if there were any other problems that, you know, came along with these, you know, crowds and so on. So, that's all.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I can't speak personally to that. I concentrated simply on the ordinance and on the fine schedule. I believe Mr. Hockman would be the best one, and I, he is on, on the line. So I'll defer to Mr. Hockman about any field investigations with regard to that. Legally speaking, we would, if we were able to catch somebody that was actually engaging in that type of criminal activity, we could certainly do something about it. If the activity occurred recurrently at the same place, then we could exercise the secondary response regulations that the council adopted earlier this year and then amended just actually last, last meeting. So, that's certainly something that we could do. But I'll, I'll leave it to Mr. Hockman to, to provide you with any factual information.
All right.
Mr. Hockman?
Members of the council, I wished I had good factual information at this point, but there hasn't been enough occasions where somebody doing this kind of thing has resulted in a big group, and there's been arrests and citations and so forth. And also, at that time, witnessing the other kinds of crimes, such as graffiti, taking place. Absent that personal observation, we really can't necessarily link the two. So, we don't have good data to show this causes that. We just know that the primary problem of the, you know, traffic issues and the, and the people cheering them on, and the people encouraging this to continue, that's something where we're focusing on for the, at least for now. And should we have the benefit of getting something secondary down the road, so to speak, that would be just icing on the cake.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, councilmember Hamada. Uh, any other questions on item fourteen H?
I think, I think there's a motion, so I'll second the motion.
Okay. So, I have a motion by councilmember Dutton, and a second by councilmember...
No, Dutton.
It was actually, yeah. So, a motion by councilmember Dutton, and a second by councilmember Santez. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Santez?
Aye.
Mayor Garza?
Aye.
Thank you for that, Madam City Clerk. Okay, so moving on to item number fifteen, council reports. Uh, let's start off with Mayor Protem Coops.
I have nothing to report, so we can move right on.
Great. Uh, up next, councilmember Dutton.
I also have nothing to report.
Uh, up next, councilmember Hamada?
I have a few, not just, uh, just, yeah, three. Uh, on, on the sixteenth, um, I, I was on a call, uh, with, uh, with the California Contract, uh, City's Association Board Meeting. We heard from Chief Osby, and again, uh, uh, his team has been taxed this year. He did say this was the worst fire year his team has ever endured. So, but he is still positive, uh, things are getting taken care of, all the other, again, local assignments are being taken care of, so, uh, he's, uh, uh, strong and he's, he's keeping at it, so he's got his team going. Um, on the twenty-third, I, I was on another call with the League of California Cities. This was the Latino Caucus. I happened to get on, uh, happened because, um, uh, Secr- uh, uh, the Secretary of State, uh, was on the call, and again, he just, uh, wanted to promote, uh, uh, the website, vote.ca.gov, to, uh, again, um, respond to any questions people may have, but I would go to our local city clerk to get those questions answered, so, um, um, and, uh, he did mention some, uh, things. He did take some stances on some of the things, wherein some of the past Secretary of States took the, uh, neutral stance, but, uh, uh, he has, uh, taken, um, uh, his stance on, again, some of the, uh, the propositions. Uh, um, he did mention that, uh, one thing that was pointed out, um, you know, ballots won't be mailed to, uh, inactive, um, you know, registered voters, so those are people who haven't voted for a while or a certain amount, uh, they're not gonna get one in the mail, so they're gonna have to take care of, uh, something soon if they're going to want to vote, so... Uh, on the twenty-fourth, uh, back to the Contract Cities, uh, did catch the, uh, the election, you know, proposition overview by, uh, the association officers, and they did a great job of just doing a, a review and, you know, uh, just, uh, again, explaining things in, uh, you know, lay terms and, uh, just, uh, uh, just, uh, pointing out, uh, again, this is, uh, gonna be a busy, uh, uh, November and, um, a lot to sort through, so, all right? Okay, that, that was it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you for that, councilmember Hamada. Councilmember Santez?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just very briefly, um, I was looking at the, uh, the weather forecast for the rest of the week, and I saw that it'll be ninety-six tomorrow, high of ninety-six, and then Wednesday, a hundred and two, and then ninety-six, ninety-three. And with that, um, I, uh, as a member of the Greater Los Angeles County Vector Control District, I'm almost cognis- I'm always cognizant of the impact of mosquito whenever the temperature, uh, goes up. So, with that, it kind of reminded me that, uh, there was a short video that I've been wanting to show to the public, uh, it's called, uh, Tip, Toss, and Take, uh, Take Action. So, I'd like, I'd like to ask the, uh, deputy city clerk if we can show that very short video.
Since nineteen fifty-two, we've been working with LA County residents to control mosquitoes.
Any container capable of catching water is a potential mosquito breeding place and should be immediately destroyed or emptied and turned bottoms up.
Be part of our history by taking the pledge to tip outstanding water, toss out unneeded containers, and take action now to protect your loved ones and prevent mosquitoes in our community. Join our story. Tip, toss, take action.
With that, I'd like to encourage our residents to please sign up and make the pledge. It's very simple. Log on to glivcd.org. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for that, councilmember Santez.
I think, I think that's gonna be in the budget for next year.
Yes. Thank you for that, councilmember Santez. Uh, for me, I just have one item. Um, this past Friday, September twenty-fifth, uh, our Economic Development Director and I, uh, were interviewed by a past, I guess, uh, magazine that has done a story on the city Bellflower, Business of Focus Magazine, and so we did an update interview with them, and so I'm not sure when it is that that article would come out on our city, um, but it was really interesting to see the items that we as a city promoted in that magazine article two years ago versus what we're doing now, and it's, just couldn't have been more proud of, of how much we've progressed in just a couple, couple of years, and it really is frankly, you know, to the leadership on the council and to our staff, we're really just, uh, stepping up and, and, uh, just doing so, so good for our city, so it's, again, just another source of pride for our city, and I wanted to thank Mr. Delalanga for spearheading those efforts. And so with that, if there's nothing else, uh, item number sixteen is adjourned, and so I will adjourn this meeting to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council at five thirty PM on Monday, October twelfth, twenty twenty. It is eight fifty-eight, and this meeting is adjourned.